Item two, this is the remand of AT&amp;T telecommunications tower conditional use permit. Before I turn it over to the staff, just for the record, let the record show that Commissioner Jaworski has recused himself for his previous involvement with the Calhoun neighborhood on this land use action. And let me just remind the commission that we have to take final action on this by March 12th. And we're currently set to do that on March 4th, given our schedules and our other agenda items. And so, our goal today is to get to very nearly a decision so that staff can take that, prepare findings, and bring back to us on the 4th. Because also remember, on the 4th, we're also discussing, hopefully, the final recommendation, the E-WAP proposal as well. So we've got a full agenda. The way staff has laid out the AIS, they've put together some tasks and some questions for us to go through. Any members of the Planning Commission feel uncomfortable with that process? I'm sure it'll be a point of departure where we can get into other questions and a discussion. So with that, Steve?
Okay. My name is Steve Oakes, the Planning Division. I was going to first start and kind of give a little bit of introduction so we all know why we're, how we got to this place. The telecommunications standards in the Gene Code were adopted in 1990s to comply with Federal Telecommunications Act. And what it did, it set out specific guidelines and standards for telecommunications facilities. Part of that was that it permitted telecommunications facilities in the R1 zone, subject to special standards. And these standards require a conditional use permit if it's in the R1 zone, and also include such standards as the 75-foot height limit setback, the height of the tower, and that it must be on a non-residential use of the parcel. In this case, that's the golf course. And there's then also additional standards. Much like, and much like other height limitations, such as buildings in the R1, which are limited to 30 feet in height in the R1 zone. They are not permitted in other residential zones, such as the R2, R3, or R4. In this case, there was also a PUD overlay on the Oakway Golf Course, and so that required that they also do a planned unit development application. So they, the, New Singler applied for two permits to locate the tower, and also for a variance that would allow them to locate the tower's ancillary facilities above ground, instead of underground, as the code generally requires. The city's final decision, made by the hearings official and then affirmed by the Planning Commission, denied the variance that allowed New Singler to place the ancillary facilities above ground, but approved the permit with underground facilities, so long as New Singler provided a noise study that showed the facility will meet the city's noise standards. The Planning Commission also added a rather extensive screening condition to the initial hearings official's decision. This was then appealed to Luba. New Singler defended the city's decision at Luba. The city did not participate in the Luba appeal. The Luba appeal set out five assignments of error. Luba affirmed the city on most of them. However, Luba remanded the matter back to the city on two issues. On remand, the Planning Commission must speak to two following issues. The Planning Commission must consider the proposal's consistency with Metro Plan Policy E4 as it is a mandatory approval criterion. This policy provides public and private facilities shall be designed and located in a manner that preserves and enhances desirable features of local and neighborhood areas, and promotes their sense of identity. And they must also, they must also show that they could, that New Singler can submit a noise study that could, that it's possible for them to submit a noise study that complies with city standards. And so, in the AIS, we laid out those two tasks as a primary tasks. In regards to the first issue, staff, we did set forth some questions to answer. And the reason we did that and didn't provide the conclusion at the end, was that really city staff felt the most important thing was that Policy E4 be applied in a manner that's consistent with Metro Plan Direction, and establishes a workable precedent, but not concluding or presupposing what that actually means to the Planning Commission then. On task number two regarding the noise study, staff did recommend that the Planning Commission rely on the applicant's noise study as evidence that it is possible for the applicant to produce a noise study that meets the standard. So if you, if you would like, then we could start working through those, and, or if the Planning Commission has other questions for staff leading into that.
Questions of a general nature for Steve?
Just one general one. Well, your zones have allowed towers with the conditional, you know, as a condition on this one. Is R1 the only zone in that category?
That's, that's my understanding, is that the R1 zone has the requirement for CUP. In other zones, for example, commercial zones and industrial zones, they're typically permitted outright. I think there may be one instance, in the case of neighborhood, commercial, perhaps C2, that requires a site review, but they're lesser application types.
Anything else? Okay, let's get right into task one. As far as I understand it, on page three of the AIS, task one is to determine whether the proposal is consistent with Metro Plan Policy E4 as an applicable approval criterion. And you've got four questions for us to walk through.
Okay. Yeah, and the first question, we posed it, we, the staff feels that the, there's pretty clear direction from Luba and past precedent on where the Planning Commission should land on the question. But this question is that, should Policy E4 apply to the tower as a utility and communication use as part of the, as referenced under communications as a key urban service or facility? And that's, that's kind of a refer, or, in the Metro Plan, the way it's set up and references key urban services and facilities and communications outlined in that, so.
And I would just, I would just jump in here and add that what we're trying to do is help the commission with some context and understanding, you know, the terms of the policy and its applicability, and that this approach we've suggested will give you a framework to do that. This approach is also, I think, consistent with past practice and some other cases that the Planning Commission's seen, and in terms of viewing, you know, the, interpreting the policy in the context of the definition from the Metro Plan of key urban services and facilities. So we think that's an important starting point to jump off from, then looking, you know, in, you know, in deeper context, in terms of the Metro Plan or refinement plan, we'll get into that.
In other words, you're asking is, do we consider it a utility of communication or some other type of land use such as commercial? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We'd like to begin the discussion.
I'll, I'll jump in, and as I was looking through this, I think it does apply, and I think it is what I would consider a utility, for a couple of reasons. One is, it does talk about communication facilities. It doesn't really distinguish whether they're public or private, but I think from my perspective, the fact that the federal government regulates this, and that in the list of the limitations that we have as a local authority, where we cannot prohibit outright something like this, it seems to me that it, it fits within that policy of E4, and that that applies, so that's.
When I was reading through the, the Luba, I guess you call it, they were pretty clear about their interpretation of telecommunications tower. It appeared as if it applied, and again, I have to agree with Bill. This would be considered telecommunications equipment, utility equipment, so it seems like the E4 would apply.
I'll just say, I think the attorney for AT&amp;T on page three of the letter dated January 25, 2013, lays out for me a pretty linear argument that it does, so I would concur. Anything else from the commission on this one?
Rick? Just clarification, I assume that on the last, in parentheses, on page AIS six, first full paragraph, it says, "Staff notes that Luba's decision incorrectly described this as a public facility." You mean using the word "public facility" is what you're referring to there?
Correct.
Okay.
Just in their decision, they, they reference it as a public facility, rather than.
Have, have we asked them for any clarity with regard to that?
No, but I think, I think the context surrounding that, I still think it was pretty clear that they were.
I would agree. I thought it was just a typo in, in reality.
Well, in any event, we see the, the policy is clear in terms of its language about applying the public and private facilities.
Yes.
So that, that error, if you will, in their, in their findings is really, I think, irrelevant.
Right, okay. I'm fine with everybody else.
Joe? I guess the, with that same paragraph that Rick notes, the following statement says, last, the last sentence of that paragraph, "While communications is clearly included in the Metro Plan's definition of key urban services and facilities, it is not absolutely clear that this policy was intended to apply to privately owned telecommunications facilities." And when I go to V3, item 24, key urban facilities and services, minimum level, it does talk about communications facilities in that group of things, which when you start reading through them, there's things like solid waste management, wastewater, fire and emergency, police protection. It says, and most of these things would, most people would probably conote with public owned facilities, but it does say specifically communications facilities, which I believe, for the most part, would be privately owned. And I guess my question is, are there any publicly owned communications facilities that apply in this, that you're aware of, or is that usually always private?
I could think of maybe the example of like a repeater or, or other radio facility we might have for emergency services?
Right.
911.
911.
Right. But by and large, as I, thank you, Randy. By and large, as I read this, this must apply to both public and private, because it includes communications facilities, and I'm thinking that that's, by and large, what it's intended to deal with. And once again, we have to go back to the intent of the people that drafted this, so that's the way I'm, I'm reading this, that it does include privately owned.
John?
Just a minor point, but it may be that some of the ambiguity of the Metro Plan could be, because at the time the plan was written, we didn't have cell towers, so that it.
Right. Any other comments, Steve?
And also, I, I wanted to note too, that the area, the, the golf course is, is labeled on the drawing, I think, as parkland, which could, which also might have been, even though it wasn't public, parkland, might have been confused with, you know, normally parks are considered public, you know, so.
Any comments on this first question? If not, then can I see just a show of hands in a straw poll of Planning Commission members who agree that Metro Plan E4 applies to the proposed telecommunications tower as a utilities and communications use? All, okay. We're all in agreement on that one. Question two, Steve?
Question two is, does the Planning Commission agree that other text and policies in the Metro Plan should be used to provide context to how Policy E4 is applied? So this question is, Luba provided clear direction that E4 is applicable in this case, and that it should be looked at and applied to the decision. This question is, and when, when applying it, do you also need to balance the rest of the Metro Plan policies? And if so, how much? How much weight do you give those other policies? So that's the, kind of the context behind that question. And the hope from that is to get a, an idea of, one, should it be applied just clearly or balanced, and if so, how much with other policies?
We'd like to go first.
I guess I'll jump in again. I think we do need to look at it in context of some of the other policies. I don't think, I think there's a danger if you just pull out one policy and try and focus on that without having the context of the other policies that may apply. And so I think we do need to look at it in context.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, that's, our purpose is in balancing all of these oftentimes contradictory and ambiguous policies, that's what we're here for, so. Steve?
Yeah, I also agree, I think you have to clearly want to consider.
One thing I just wanted to clarify is, I don't think, I think that your question here is that we'll, we're going to look at these, not how exactly we're going to balance them. Is that, I felt a little uncomfortable with the last clause of your remarks there.
Yeah, and it does kind of culminate, I guess, in the, in the end of.
Eventually.
Yep. Whether to take E4 on its own, or in the context of the broader Metro Plan. Other comments? John?
Well, this is specific, but I'll mention it now anyway, just to go to people's thoughts, I guess. Metro Plan G1, Policy G1 talks about extending key urban services and facilities in an orderly and efficient manner. And I have a concern with the telecom policy as our code as it's written, because it talks about providing the opportunity for co-location, but nowhere does it require it actually to be followed out. And I think that's a flaw in the code, unfortunately, it's the code we're working with now. You know, it may well be that this tower is unnecessary because it'd be co-located on another, but we don't have any way to encourage that to occur.
Rick?
I get some input from staff on this, on, on E4. We've had the discussion around E4 in the past on a lot of different appeals and issues that we've dealt with. And it's my belief, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we tended to say that that's an aspirational kind of city goal that we're trying to achieve. And yet, when I read the Luba remand, it sort of says that that's different in this particular case, that we have to deal with on a case specific situation. And yet, E4 has been before Luba before in, in appeals, I believe, I remember that, and it's never come back this way. And I'm just trying to understand why they think there's a difference here.
Well, I think, I think it's important to recognize that the Planning Commission's decision on appeal last time found that Policy E4 was implemented already by the code, by the PUD provisions, by the conditional use requirements. And they ultimately didn't fully agree with that, that, that it also, by its terms, by the language in it, using words like "shall," that it elevates it to a higher, more specific, you know, case-specific standard, and in this case, had to be addressed as an independent approval criterion. We still pretty firmly believe that the context in the code, it, it, that the E4 is implemented through those code provisions, the telecom standards. It's a fairly robust set of application requirements in this case, that deals with things like neighborhood compatibility, the screening requirements, looking at, you know, its external impacts. Luba didn't ultimately agree or find that there was enough information in the record to prove up that, that the policy's fully implemented through the code. And so, we're back here today, I think part of the exercise is determining, how does it apply? What does it mean? And what, if any, findings or additional conditions would be made, or would it, would it change the outcome of the Planning Commission's decision?
And I think one of the questions you're asking is kind of what we'll get to eventually, is just then how do you balance that, given what does appear in some ways as an aspirational policy, yet it is something that Luba's directed us to address further? How does that then play out with, with the Metro Plan and the other issues? So we're not kind of to that question yet.
Okay.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, I'll throw in some comments similar to John's that sort of, that are, that I, some of the wording in the telecommunications standards and else, about extending services, and also that this is allowed as a conditional use permit, sort of imply that, you know, we're adding some raw land out, you know, we've zoned some land out at the edge, and so now we're extending services out. I think the challenge here, and the reason that, you know, Luba may have come down a little differently, is now we're trying to insert something in an existing neighborhood that's already built out. It's, so it's not exactly the same, it's a different issue. I mean, it's, so the challenge is, how do you, you know, how do you balance that, you know, you, you want to, maybe you want to enhance, you're really not extending the service or whatever, but, you know, trying to do it in, in a completely built-out neighborhood, or, you know, essentially built-out neighborhood. So that's, it's a different situation than if, if it was out on, you know, where we're adding some, where we got some, you know, some undeveloped subdivisions out at the edge in R1, and we're going to.
Bill?
And I think kind of getting back to what Gabe was saying about the "shall," and how Luba elevated it because of the word "shall." I think the reason, in my mind, we still need to look at some of the other policy issues is even though it does say "shall," it's "shall be designed and located in a manner that preserves and enhances desirable features of local and neighborhood areas, and promotes their sense of identity." And that doesn't get as specific to what we need to be looking at here. And so, that's, I think, that aspirational part. So I think the "shall" is, it's requiring us to be aspirational, I guess, but then we still have to have some of the other policies to look at to determine how, for instance, communication facilities or key urban facilities or things like that apply in this particular instance.
Any other comments before we see a show of hands on this one? Joe?
Just as I read E4, having taken the Luba remand to heart, going back and reading it, the whole section is related as findings, objectives, and policies, and it lists out findings. Most of these things seem to deal with, with enhancements to areas. Objectives is clearly aspirational policies. To me, it's a little bit greater to say that that's aspirational on the one hand. On the other hand, you still come back to a matter of balance about how you execute that policy through, in the real world and the actual code. So to me, I'm a little hesitant to use the word, the description aspirational for it, but I still believe that you have to take it and look at how it, it reflects itself in the actual code and in decisions we make. So that'd be a comment I would have there, just to try to address something of what Luba's challenge, if you will.
So let's see, a show of hands here then, among the Planning Commission members who agree that other text and policies in the Metro Plan should be used to provide context as to how E4 is applied. Do you agree with that? Raise your hand. Okay. We all agree with that as well. Question three, Steve?
Okay, question three is a two-part, two-parter. And it is, does the Planning Commission agree that the Willockensie Area Plan should also be used as context to help interpret the meaning and applicability of Metro Plan Policy E4? And the second part of that is, are there other factors beyond those listed in the refinement plan that should be considered for context? And that question also is kind of the next step in, in the way the, our comprehensive plan is set up, with the Metro Plan being the overall arching document, and then the refinement plan's kind of being more area-specific. And so, that's just the typical way we look at thing, that we look at land use decisions. And so that's, the first part of the question is just, do we use the Willockensie Area Plan? And, and kind of trying to figure out what more does this policy mean? And, but then the second part of that question is also, there's other factors that have also been introduced from both sides of the argument, and what other factors should be considered in, for context in this case, in looking at what does Policy E4 mean to the telecommunications center, so.
Okay, well, let's take the first part first. The Willockensie Area Plan, known as the WAP, do the commissioners feel about using that as part of the criteria here?
Well, I think just as Steve laid out, I don't see how we don't use it. I think we've, all our decisions have always been made based on the hierarchy of our information and how the refinement fits in, so I think it's important to do it. The one thing I did notice as I went through the document is, there's a reference in here about public facilities and services, but in this situation, there's not really, it doesn't seem to me there's a lot of information about, quote, what we just termed would be private facilities. And so I, I kind of find there's a little bit of a void in the discussion in here, so I'm not sure how we are going to fold that in.
Other comments? Can I get past this first part quickly, then? Show of hands from the commission members who agree that the Willockensie Area Plan should also be used as context to help interpret the meaning and applicability of Policy E4. Raise your hands. Okay. So then a little greedier question is, what else to be considered? Would you like to start with that one? I'll jump in, I, I think too, we need to circle back, probably, as we go down this echelon of criteria and look back again at the conditional use permit criteria, and maybe even the PUD criteria that applies.
I agree.
You know, like, as soon as, as soon as the case you got this.
You do telecommunications standards or whatever.
Oh, yeah. You have to consider them.
The point.
For example, you can't consider radiation or, you know.
Right.
Because FCC just allows that.
Anything else?
Steve?
I just wanted to add one thing. It's not unusual for refinement plans, given when you're, you know.
Sort of, whatever, negligent or, you know, just, you know, not cover, not cover everything. Obsolete.
Yeah, not cover everything, because things were different then, and they.
Predict the future.
Anticipated, so.
Anything else? So, CUP criteria, PUD criteria, telecommunications act and related criteria, okay? I don't think we'll take a board on that one. All right. So then that gets us down to question four, Steve, a little even more maybe greedier, okay?
Yes, question four is the, given the context of other Metro Plan and Willockensie Area Plan provisions, additional code standards for telecommunications facilities, and other factors such as the character of the surrounding area, what does Policy E4 require in this instance? And in this case, it's kind of after the, after looking at all these other plans and other policies, other context, yeah, what does that result in? And I guess that's the, the big question here, there's, and we laid it out with two options, conclude that it is consistent, or conclude that it isn't consistent. And, and, yeah, and I guess that's the, the key question of how, how do we define the policy in the context of everything else, so.
Who'd like to start this discussion? Steve?
I'll just throw this out from, from my point of view, when I was looking at that issue, you know, obviously, we're doing a balancing act, so one of the things is, what are the unintended consequences of proving this, or? One thing that I was struck by, I have to admit, was, we put this rather large requirement for land, shading protection. And we involved, we looked at the maps, the third map, which I think is the one that we accepted, the Planning Commission accepted at the time, the conditions. There were a large number of properties affected that we were trying to mitigate. And even the properties, that's not really a good balance account, because we have apartments that, it's one property owner, but a large number of. So the one thing I wanted to, the thing that concerned me is, normally in balancing, you know, you try to minimize the unintended consequences, and it looks like we've already sort of, at least the Planning Commission, the last time we reviewed this, made a lot of changes to the, the conditions that sort of verified the impact on a large number of adjacent properties. So that, that concerns me. In other words, if we had, you know, if we're only impacting, you know, one or two neighbors, then, you know, you.
Different than if we have a, okay. Cool one. Bill?
That's my position. I think, my thought is that the conditions we imposed did help balance all of that and bring that into something that was maybe, well, again, that, that balance. And I guess, getting back to the CUP requirements, you know, we do limit cellphone towers in residential zones, R1 zones, to 75 feet, it meets that. It meets that. We require at least a 75-foot setback from adjacent properties and it's, I think, 100 and a little over 100 feet, so it meets that. And so, I think all of those criteria, it meets the actual criteria for the CUP and that, from my recollection, the additional landscaping was to help, I guess, balance that with, with some of the other areas around. So, I think, you know, from that perspective, I think it, it meets those requirements and again, not making things so restrictive that we effectively prohibit the tower. And I, and I think too, just context in, in the area where you do have schools with, you know, light poles and you have various other utilities that are above ground, you know, I think, I think what we did here originally strikes that balance.
Steve?
Well, a couple things. I have to disagree with Bill on this, Commissioner Randall, on the, on the issue of existing facilities. We're not talking about existing facilities, Bill, because this is a punitive, expect, you know, standard service. Whether there's power poles or light poles that exist in the neighborhood, from my point of view, we're not deciding on those. They may have been built.
Maybe before there was the Willock Kinsey plan, you know, it may have been, they have been built before, you know, we had the telecommunications standards and so forth.
So, the, the prior existence of, of overground utilities is, doesn't really convey much strength to me to the argument because that's what we did in the past for years and then at some point in time we decided to underground them and then I'll just think about that. So, that I have to take some exception to. Now, the other thing about the, the conditioning is, I, I agree that in the future, it will benefit, but the concept of planting a, what, a one-inch or two-inch, I think it's a one-inch caliber tree that's six feet tall now, doesn't really do very much. Now, if we said, yeah, 20 years from now or 30 years from now, that, that can do a lot, but right now, that's not much, you know, from my point of view. What we're doing is, we're providing the potential for future mitigation or, or screening, but right now, we're not doing that because the conditions we put on it, you know, are so, I mean, are reasonable, but, you know, you just don't, you know, you're not gonna get any visual screening from, you know, a one-inch caliber tree that's six feet tall, certainly not for 15 or 20 years. So, so although in the future, that would take care of the problem, it doesn't really take care of the problem right now, so.
Well, it seems to me that if we assume that this is a use that basically needs to be considered for the area, that we're not gonna say, no, you can't have it because it can't possibly be aesthetically appropriate, we have to figure out how to make it, minimize those impacts of the neighborhood. And, to me, there are two. One is sound and one, the other is appearance. We're gonna talk about sound later, but appearance, to me, I don't think we've done all we can do. I mean, there's evidence in the record that the screen will not screen the top 25-foot of the tower. We talked a little bit about stealth technology when we had the original hearing, but we didn't go very far with it. I think, now that this has come back, I think we do need to look more about whether stealth technology would be the way to mitigate the visual impact more than just screening the adjacent properties would do. So I would like to reopen that discussion. You know, at one point in time stealth just looked even stupider, but now we've, I believe there are designs out there that could indeed make this look more like a compatible tree in the neighborhood and I wonder if we can't get vision of that.
See other hands, so I'll jump in too. Trying to connect the dots for myself, it, it kind of goes like this for me. We have this art, we have this code requirement or opportunity that in R1 allows these towers to go to 75 feet. And so, I'm thinking, okay, if this applies citywide, this isn't the only place where this issue can come up. So, kind of need to take a broader look at how we might, or another planning commission might have to deal with this in the future. Policy E4, in essence, talks about protecting and enhancing, okay? So then, protection is pretty easy in my mind to define. What does enhancement mean? How do we grapple with that? And I think that has been an issue for planning staff and planning commissions, exactly how do we get our hands on that? So, in the bigger context, I'm trying to find in all this documentation, the WAP and the Metro Policy and the CUP criteria and the PUD criteria, some kind of way to define enhancement. The neighbors, obviously, as, as John said, base their opposition on two things. One is the impact on their view and the other is on the noise issue. And we'll talk about noise in a few minutes. As I look through the WAP, I found a goal that, that requires the protection of view sheds. It's, in my document, it's page six, Willock Kinsey Planning Area Goals. It's just a bullet. It says, provide for the protection and enhancement of land designated park and open space as well as significant natural resources, including but not limited to view sheds. And something, okay, there's a connection. I get into the Willock Kinsey area plan even further, which, by the way, many years ago, I had a hand in developing. And it talks about, the only place I could find, and staff, other members of the commission, if you can find places I'm forgetting or overlooking or hitting in the wrong direction, please feel free to correct me. But the only place that I could see in the Willock Kinsey plan, any discussion about view shed, was in regard to Gillespie Butte. And there it talks about, like, I don't know if these are policies or just statements, so it's a standard. It says, development plan shall demonstrate a concern for views of the Butte as well as views from the Butte. And it talks about development shall, to the extent possible, preserve significant vegetation, significant rock outcroppings, and historic or visual significance. But then in the preamble of the standards, it says, it is not the intent of the standards to prohibit development. So at first I'm thinking, we've got something here to hang our atson, protect the view shed, protect this Gillespie Butte, and then it says, not the intent. So that doesn't help a great deal. Further reading through the WAP, I find a number of policies that do refer to compatibility and enhancement particularly between residential and non-residential zones. And as I read further, there are a number of policies, but they all seem to rely on landscaping. They talk about the gateways and other types of areas that I, I could point, I just don't have the time to add to. The environmental desire, the neighborhood design element, they talk about entrance corridors, neighborhood gateways, Lamont Greenway, Gillespie Butte. But everything that I could find in that neighborhood design element, again, just talked about how to landscape, which is what we previously relied on in the conditional use process. Tree plantings to protect, enhance the neighborhood. And what's curious to me is in the Luba decision, again, pages nine and 10, the Luba decision, specifically page nine, line nine through 11, they conclude that, given the inherently subjective nature of a criterion that requires adequate screening, we cannot say the city's interpretation of the code as requiring screening of the tower to a reasonable extent is incorrect. And similarly, on page 10, the discussion lines eight through 16, again, they talk about the proposed tower being reasonably compatible and harmonious. And it says that, we cannot say that those findings are inadequate or represent an erroneous interpretation and application of the code. And we also do not think that the evidence cited by the petitioner would be the neighborhood in this, in this context, in support of its argument that the tower is not compatible with the neighborhood is so overwhelming that a reasonable person could not find that the tower is compatible. So, I'm struggling with grabbing on to policies and findings in the, in the WAP that go beyond what we've already done and what the hearings official already did with the landscaping and screening of this. We are talking about that top 25 feet, which again, there's evidence in the testimony. At first I thought, well, why not just plant a 75-foot tall tree that grows up there quickly? There's evidence in the testimony that says then the tower's not gonna work right. So, that's where I'm, I'm hung up. I'm just having a hard time finding anything to grasp on to that goes beyond what we've already done and doesn't get into this telecommunications act, which would put us in a position of discriminating against AT&amp;T versus some other competitor provider or prohibiting this in an R1 zone, not only anywhere else in Willock Kinsey, but anywhere else in the city. And that's the struggle I'm having with. Going beyond how we have already interpreted, subconsciously, I guess, how to apply E4.
Well, just a, just a brief comment. Again, I agree with you, the issue of the conditional use permit in R1 is a challenge. That's why I brought up the issue, that to me, it's, normally you would assume that, you know, when you, when you expand the city is when you extend utilities. In other words, we don't, we don't build an R1 neighborhood and then 10 years later extend sewer and water and electricity to them. So I think, again, in most situations, in an R1 neighborhood, it seems like, the reason that you put that in there is because there may be reasons as you, if we expand the urban growth boundary or we start building out areas that were zoned R1, but there's nothing there now, that you extend the facility. So I don't find as much of a problem with that. It just, just seems to me that, the reason you made it a conditional use permit is you wanted to make it difficult to cite these kinds of facilities in R1 neighborhoods. And in fact, we prohibit it in the R2 and R3 and R4. So, we only allow it in, in the, yes, in the residential areas. So, I didn't have as much difficulty with that because the way I interpreted it is, for the most part, I've built out facilities when you built, when you initially built out a, a part of the, the city or whatever.
The only thing is, Steve, you know, you, to a large extent, I agree with you, extending utilities, you expect as the, as the community grows outward. However, you know, there are cases where we built fire stations, police facilities internally, not at the periphery. So there are those exceptions to facilities that aren't on in the periphery, I think. Rick?
Yeah, I think along with that same line, as you even mentioned, there was a lack of understanding that something like this would come along and as technology changes, there's likely to be something else that occurs that may have to be, you know, sort of interjected into our existing neighborhoods. The, the couple of things that I've struggled with, and I think Randy did a good job of sort of explaining my feeling on this, and that's been the problem I've had with this remand, is, I didn't feel that Luba actually gave us a lot of understanding as to what they were looking for, other than try to give us something more. And I agree with Randy, I think, and although I wasn't here for that decision before, I thought the commission did a good job in sort of explaining those issues. What I didn't see in the record, which I would have liked to see, and I think Steve mentioned it a little bit, was, a lot of the existing facilities, as you said, the, the light poles and other things like that, baseball fields and things like that, was there something that occurred during this time that we could go back to, such as the rebuild of some of our, some of the stadium areas around the, excuse me, around the high schools and schools where there was a lot of change made place, but none of that's in the record, so I can't rely on it. There's some information in here by some of the neighbors that their cell service is adequate, so it's fine with them, they don't need it. But I'm gonna believe that AT&amp;T didn't decide to expend the amount of money that it probably takes to put one of these in, just because it wasn't needed. So that would suggest, but again, there tends to be a lack of that documentation, it seems to me, in the record to rely on, so it's hard to refer to that as part of the evidence of why some of this might be needed or not needed. And I found that to be sort of a shortage unless I'd missed it somewhere. And if I did, I'd like to have somebody let me know so I can catch up on that, but I didn't see that anywhere in here. So, the enhancement idea is discussed in E4, it's sort of, I'm gonna gather when it was written, really dealt with sort of the physical aspects of neighborhoods and that enhancement, but I've gotta believe with most of us who use cell phones in today's world, that's also part of our livability and, and what we, what we expect now in our neighborhoods and the service of our neighborhoods. So, I'm real torn with this and I've yet to sort of come to grips with how to best deal with explaining this, because I don't know that we've got more information to hand Luba that would make them happy than sort of what we've done, other than just explaining it in longer words and more pages, it seems like to me.
Bill?
Well, I think I, I agree with you, Rick, as far as cellphone coverage being a desirable feature for a neighborhood. I, I agree. I, my neighborhood where I live, the cellphone coverage isn't that good and that's something that would be desirable for me anyway. But kind of getting back to what Steve was saying, as far as conditional use permits making things difficult, I think I, I'd not really agree completely with that in that I think conditional use permits really are not so much to make it difficult to develop, but to make what development occurs that might not be within that box that we've set up as the code, something that we take an additional look at to make sure that it's compatible with the surrounding uses and the surrounding neighborhoods. And I think, in looking at the criteria that we've set up for conditional use permits for cellphone towers in R1 neighborhoods, again, getting back to the 75-foot height limit setbacks, the fact that it can't just be in somebody's backyard, it has to be either on a vacant or non-residential lot, and those sorts of things. I looked at those criteria and in this instance, how that played out in the application, that's the additional screening that we added to that for landscaping, and I understand it doesn't screen the top 25 feet, but that additional criteria that we put on landscaping, to me, addresses the conditional use permit criteria and helps again, achieve that balance of cellphone coverage and, and if, assuming that's a desirable feature for a neighborhood versus a tower in, of course.
Well, I'd like to come back to stealth. I mean, the question, there are two questions here. Is it feasible and can we require it? I think it's feasible, we would agree, at least I would, with myself. So the question to staff is, is there a way for us to make that a condition of approval?
I don't think staff would recommend at this point that there's, I guess I'm backtracking just a little bit, but one of the, the second remand issue had to do with a noise study and kind of Luba saying that while there was, it sounds like it should be feasible, that or, like, it makes sense that if you put something underground, it's gonna be quieter. There wasn't anything in the record to show that it actually would be. So I think in this case, it would be the same issue you're running into if you were to condition something to the extent of a different design. You'd be looking at, there's nothing in the record to show that it does help views or anything like that, there, well, you would think it would. There's also nothing in the record to show that, that AT&amp;T can build it. In fact, there's some, you know, in the, in the earlier discussions, they, they talked about some issues with co-location and that they didn't even want that type of tower there. So if, you know, if, if that was the only remedy, that, and we recommend that a new application would be a better way to go, so.
And I think, if I recall right, you guys correct me, I believe when we dealt with the appeal last time, we talked about stealth as well, as another option, and I think at that point felt, that was, again, kind of beyond the record even during the appeal for those same kind of reasons. We were reluctant to kind of deal with, you know, yet another variable that really hadn't been kind of vetted through the, the formal public hearing process. So, I think we still share that concern. While I don't think we disagree, that could be a central goal ultimately out there, I think we even said that during the last appeal. Procedurally, it was tough to inject that into the, the equation at that stage, and I think we had the same. we have the same concern doing that at this stage as well. If I can also maybe just jump back to the last couple of comments that Commissioners Duncan and Randall had, in looking at kind of how you tease out this policy, and you come back to kind of the CUP and PUD provisions that you looked at before, I think, again, you guys correct me if I'm mischaracterizing this, but I think in the appeal, the commission found essentially that it was more kind of of a structural answer to how you deal with what was termed to be more of an aspirational policy at that time, by saying, we have the provisions that have been adopted that implement that policy through the adoption of our PUD and CUP criteria, and that satisfies it. Luba disagreed. But what I think is still fair for you to discuss is along the lines of what I think Commissioner Randall's trying to put forward, which is, okay, maybe that structural arrangement is not good enough as an answer, but what you did with this PUD and how you implemented those policies and what they emerged as in terms of conditions and mitigation factors could be something you explore further, and that could be part of the equation that you look at. That's one of the things we've offered and, you know, is one of the possible solutions. I'm not saying that that in and of itself satisfies everything, but I think it could expand into more discussion than what you did the first time around in addressing that directly back to that policy. You, in essence, were looking at those conditions more as mitigation and satisfying the PUD criteria and said that these provisions are implemented or implement that policy. Now, what Luba's saying is, no, you have to more directly address that policy. And so, I think it's fair game, at least, to be able to say, well, do the things that you considered before have additional weight in addressing that specific policy? I don't think that's been hit head-on yet. And so, there's one place you can talk further, if that was, I think, in line with what Commissioner Randall was trying to get at.
John, I just got a question.
Well, I just want to follow up to, it's unfortunate we can't require stealth here, because I think it's the perfect answer to making this more compatible with the neighborhood. And I would strongly encourage us to look at including that discussion in future deliberations, because I think the technology has gotten to the point where it's a feasible option. I'd rather see the folks say, show us why you aren't going to use stealth, rather than say, it's a way of reducing the distance to the nearest residential property, which is where the only place stealth is mentioned now. So, having let that go with reluctance, I am inclined to say that we've done just about all we can do if that cell tower's going to be there.
Well, and I don't think we're saying absolutely you cannot address that. I think it could pose a weakness in your decision for further challenges, should you go that route. So, is it possible that you could look to condition it? Yeah. Is it risky? I think it is. Because you opened up those questions, we just decided.
I'd be willing to take the risk, but I suspect I'm the only one.
Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back and reinforce Commissioner Duncan's perspective. One of the things, one of the glaring things that I found missing, and maybe I missed it, because there's a lot of material to read, was, and it's also partially because this is one of the technologies I work at in my other high-technology job. So, I didn't see anything that showed the location of their other adjacent cellphone towers, because, you know, cell phones have a certain, you know, there's a certain ideal that you ascribe to, and, you know, given, you saw the locations of the others, you could have made a more, you know, a better understanding that this is a critical location or marginal location, you know, whatever. But I didn't see that at all in the record.
Initial application, right?
That's what in the first instance.
It wasn't in the records. Just wanted to mention that.
I think the struggle with the remand here is, while some of that information was part of the initial application, not even the appeal that you heard, but prior to that even, it's not a subject of the remand. So, it's difficult to pursue that question.
Yeah, I'm back in the queue, and John, I guess we already got there. But I didn't ask that question where the other towers were, but I looked at Exhibits S and T, which were per the record, that showed the search rings for this tower and then the current coverage area. And I keep coming back to where in the Willackensie area, either in that search ring or in any of the other ones, will we not be dealing with this issue? And I forgot to mention earlier, I mean, even ways of imposing conditions, I thought, well, you know, city code requires the undergrounding of the devices that make this thing operate, though what about undergrounding utilities? I mean, we'll talk about that. Unfortunately, in the Willackensie plan, the only policy that addresses that sort of thing is on page 132. It says, "The city shall work with E-Web to continue support for placing utility lines underground." It doesn't give us anything, again, to really add more bite to this whole thing. So, yeah, as I come around on this, I'm sensing that unless we legislate on the fly and make some condition, then we run the risk of discriminating against this particular vendor, this particular provider, or prohibiting, being accused of prohibiting this in an R1 zone. I'm hard pressed to think that the conditions that we previously imposed don't satisfy E4. I would like to say plant a taller tree, but I don't think we can do that either and make the tower work. That was my first thought. So, where are we at, folks? We, Jeff, you haven't said anything.
No, I haven't. I'm, you guys are all taking the words right out of my mouth. I'm trying to, I guess where I'm going is, I think we're going to have to try to address, attempt to try to address E4 by looking with all the existing valid addresses and how it's related to E4 and how it responds to that. I'm not sure how else to proceed here, other than doing something along the lines of what John is suggesting and opening it back up again, which, you know, we've been warned is a dangerous way to go.
Well, let's take a look at the options, the two options that the staff provided us. Option one finds, concludes that the application is consistent with the policy. Option two indicates that it is not consistent, so.
You're welcome.
You need some things to ponder as part of that.
That's why you're here.
They get big to big.
Yeah, in that regard, I was going to ask staff. So, let's just presuppose that we decided option two was, what exactly would you use as?
In option two?
I think we have an idea of what would happen in option one. I'm just curious what would happen.
I think one of the important pieces of option two would be to look at what is unique in this particular circumstance that your answer, if it's no, would not be something that would be universal to all R1 zones, because that is a danger sign in terms of, especially the telecom act and so forth. So, what is it about this particular request that has certain characteristics, certain issues, either through policies that you are citing, or through physical circumstances or other factors you're looking at, where you feel in this case, that policy can't be met? And clear enough that in maybe other cases, it might be. You don't have to necessarily make it work in other locations that are not on the table now, but at least make it clear that there are some particular circumstances here that make it less feasible. The more you're vague about that, and you leave that as an open-ended question, and one could construe to say that what you're saying is R1 would never be, it never could be met in R1, that's a warning sign that I think you need to be careful about. And so, some uniqueness around this, either through policies or site conditions or something else, would be helpful.
And that's why, Steve, I was trying to find something in the app that would lead to that conclusion.
Well, I think that's my concern with option two is, you know, as we've talked, federal communications act, we have to show that it is feasible. We can't, we can't just say, we don't want one here, or that sort of thing. And if we make it so that it is impossible to locate it somewhere, as you said, Steve, then we run afoul of the federal law. And so, in looking at, you know, again, what Randy was talking about, trying to find if there are alternatives in the code for, you know, saying, okay, not here, but maybe somewhere else, then I think that's valid. But I'm not sure that we have that before us. I don't think we can say that there's some other places that this might go that would be feasible and still meet the conditions. I mean, it meets all the conditions of the conditional use permit. And so, I guess that's where I'm struggling too.
And I'm not trying to suggest that you have to find other places. What I'm saying is that you want to be able to say, there's some particulars here that help to set that apart from just standard old R1 zoning is in and of itself the issue, that if you were to basically say something as extreme as, well, based on this policy, it's impossible for cell towers to be located in any R1-zoned area, period, that's an extreme statement that we would be concerned about.
And I think where I'm struggling with option two of saying it's not consistent with E4 is that it meets the conditional use permit criteria, it meets all of those things, and so, here's all of these things, and so, what's a really good reason why it can't go here, you know? And I guess that's where my struggle is, because it seems to me that it meets the criteria for what we've set up for cellphone towers in R1 neighborhoods. And, you know, again, whether that's good criteria or not, that's the criteria that we have.
And that's where I was trying to hang my hat on, protection of the view shed of Gillespie Butte, and couldn't quite get there. And also trying to identify what enhancement means, and to me, I couldn't find that enhancement goes beyond landscaping. So, again, other than that, we're kind of.
Well, we share the frustration you have too. It's hard, because I think if we go back to the fact that we're dealing with a, you know, a policy, a broad policy from the metro plan that you're working from, how do you apply that in a case-specific situation like this and make it have meaning, and at the same time, comply with federal law? It's not an easy chore to understand where the bar is set for that, and that's.
I wouldn't be excited about looking at this out of my window either, but then, who would? Where could we put this where somebody would be or wouldn't see it? And I think it's.
In an R1.
Yeah.
John?
Well, I'm going to vote for two, because I do think we have a solution that's risky, but I think we ought to head towards the, I'm broken record here, I have, but I think it's worth taking the risk and trying to meet the desire to include the, not include the appearance, but not worsen the appearance by going to stealth.
It actually, if I could, Commissioner Belcher, one thing maybe you might think about, as opposed to conditioning that, that that could be your finding for why, or at least that's part of the reason perhaps why you would say no, is that basically cell towers, I mean, I'm throwing this out there, there's a suggestion here, speaking your words, that a cell tower in R1 is enough of a compatibility concern that stealth design is one way that can still meet that policy standard, but it's not proposed in this case, therefore, we can't make a finding to substantiate it. Had it been, maybe that would have been something you would have been able to find consistency with. So, as opposed to trying to condition it, it's really a grounds for the denial that you're using. You following me?
And the applicant can always reapply.
Right. So, I'd rather have you pursue that option, frankly, than trying to condition this without those other facts. I don't know that there's still risk in what I just suggested, but probably less than trying to condition it.
Well, isn't anyone else inclined to pursue that avenue? I don't want to waste time.
Well, we've got, yeah, Steve and then Randall.
I just want to follow up on Steve's comments, if I can, if that's all right with you, Commissioner Baker?
Sure.
How does that fit, then, within the telecommunications act, where, I'm trying to read it very quickly here, but it sort of talks about that you're not suggesting the tower is something different if we don't require lights and ball fields that are 75 feet high to be stealth. How is that not then, not sort of discriminating against a certain type of 75-foot structure?
Well, what I would suggest is you probably don't stop with, that is your only argument. If you're going to go with option two, that's one piece that you might want to consider. I still think you need to look at some locational issues as well, and try to look at some more site-specific aspects of this that then can address kind of the more generic argument you're making, which I share some concern with too. So, I think you'd have to build on that a little further.
Put me back in the queue.
I'm citing the telecommunications act, and I'm fine with that, but I just want to make it clear that we chose to prohibit these in R2, R3, and R4 zones. So, you know, we didn't allow the telecommunications act to overrule our local planning policies. And then we put in an additional requirement on R1, which was the cup, right? It turns out that this is a PUD, because it was previous to the PUD. So, I just wanted to throw that out, because from my point of view, that makes a big, you know, it makes a big difference. If we didn't prohibit in some areas and it was allowed throughout the city, and, you know, that would be very different. I also wanted to, to me, it seemed to me there must be, there's some sightlines and locational issues, because we have some issues with stuff in the south that are quite far away, and in other words, they're, you know, because of the site itself, it's not level, is what I understand. So, and, pardon? Well, parts of it are, parts of it to the south. It just seemed to me that there were some sighting issues here that made it a little more challenging that, and again, if you came into a new R1 neighborhood and placed a cellphone tower, then you would probably develop things in a specific way around it, you know, for whatever reason, you know, you had marks around it or whatever to buffer it. So, I'm tending to support option two. I do appreciate all of the research that Commissioner Hledic did on the WAP. Just a lot of times, in those refinement plans, you get a sensible, you know, you get a sense here, and then there's little pieces of information here, it's not always connected. So, they talk about the view sheds, and then they don't really talk about it anywhere else. It's just because that's the way those things get developed, you know? Sometimes they're written over a period of time by several staff people and, you know, it's really a challenge. I think I'll stop at that point.
Great. I'll pass it this time, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. So, we're back to Steve.
There's one other issue that keeps bothering me about this.
And what is, one of this?
I know we've, this has been worked over extensively, and I remember reading, returning Jerome's wrong treatise on, but the thing that, one of the things that bothers me is you have the cup and the PUD, and the cup requires things to be done and prove that everything is okay now, and, you know, and then the PUD allows these, you know, the final PUD application, where, because it seems to me there were, I had some discomfort with the way it was, we sort of circumvented the cup, in a way, by not saying that it needs it and conditioning it on, eventually, the PUD would, you know, take care of meeting whatever, finally, the time is out of place. For example, this landscaping thing, this happens really at the second phase of the PUD and the. PUD, and the...
Is that, is that an argument in this remand, though?
Pardon?
Are you suggesting that's an argument in the remand?
No, only that it's, 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 it makes me uncomfortable, and why I'm tending more to option two, because at least that way we get everything out on the table in terms of all of the options for, all of the options that were in the remand to make it consistent.
Well, okay, for putting the cards on the table, laying everything, I think we have to go with option one, unfortunately. There are just not enough meat there to hang on to an option two to somehow condition it, just can't grab on to a policy that doesn't put us, I think, in jeopardy with the Telecommunications Act and the city code. And I think what we've done with the CUP and the PUD process can be, can be used to justify this E4. I mean, that's, we thought it was a city policy to begin with, and as I think somebody mentioned, from that was developed, the, could have been used to develop the R1 allowance of these towers in the R1 zone. I think the reason for allowing them in the R1 and the, and not in the other residential zones is that R1 covers such a broad area of the city. Had it been prohibited in R1, it would have essentially prohibited cell towers from use in the city, and so, that's why they're allowed in R1. I, I don't see the distinctions enough to make an argument for the option two, to deny this amount of... Steve, I'm trying to think of what site conditions here. Steve Baker mentions, you know, if this would be starting from scratch, maybe we'd build a park around it. Well, it has a golf course around it. So, I'm, I'm still having difficulty differentiating this site from anywhere else in Willackensie and Hollywood and quiet anywhere else. Bill?
Well, and I still go back to, to the, in the Luba order on page eight, specifically with the conditional use permit and adequate screening, and just that definition of adequate screening, and it seems like, there seems to be a desire to have complete screening, and I'm not sure that's the intent of the conditional use permit. I think the conditional use permit, when it says adequate screening, is considering all of those factors. I mean, to completely screen a 75-foot tower, I'm not sure is reasonable, or, again, there's concern that it may not even work then. So, I think, I still go back to our original decision and the additional conditions for landscaping and screening that we put on it, and I feel that we've kind of hit the best of, of what we can do within the conditional use permit criteria, and I, I tend to still lean toward option one.
John?
Well, I'm, I'm looking back at the stated purposes of the neighborhood design law, and it says, "Preserve the character of the existing neighborhood." So, that, that's not enhancing, that's keeping us there. And again, broken record one more time, I think we have a, a technology that can be applied here to, to do that, to provide the same general visual value for the watch. Steve has given us a, a less risky way possibly of, you know, denying the permit and having them come back with a stealth zone, and, once again, that's where I'm going to end up, and therefore, I will go with option two. Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one thing too, that I thought was unfortunate or unfortunate, but, you know, we, the Planning Commission last time around required them to apply for it in the exact location where they already applied.
As for Commissioner Randall?
It's conceivable that you could have moved it into the middle of town, as an example of some mitigation that might, might have happened, and maybe it might have made their utility runs a little longer or whatever, but, you know, that would be, that may have been something that someone could have looked at. But we prohibited it because we required them to apply for it at the exact locations of the facilities that were out there. So, we prohibited that possible change or mitigation, and to me, that was, you know, it was, probably needed to be done then, but it had some unintended consequences, in that if there would have been a location elsewhere on the golf course where, for whatever reason, the impact might have been less done.
Are you suggesting that be a condition?
No, but I'm saying, well, certainly, that, one could look at that as another way of further mitigating the impacts, minimizing the impacts. Again, we're not going to enhance, I think, Commissioner Belcher, you're right, all you want to do is try and preserve, because it's important. So, that would, that could have been some, could be something that could have been looked at then, but it wasn't at the time, and I don't know if it's appropriate to do that now or not.
I'm leaning towards option one, although I agree with Commissioner Belcher, that I would, I would like to have seen a stealth option on the table. I have a real concern by what we've talked about here, by the CUP, the PUD, and all the other things that we've discussed, that we don't have a supportable enough argument to back the, basically, the denial because of E4. And I think some of that goes back to what Commissioner Baker said, is that some of this document is now 20 years old. It's one of the challenges we run into with our refinement plans, is that a lot of issues, as I said, there's really not even a discussion in, in the Willackensie area plan, talking about private facilities, or private types of things, and how to deal with them. So, I'm with Randy on the fact that there's not a lot of evidence in here that we can really, in my mind, deny on. I think we're sort of in that situation where we have to agree and approve that it complies just because of the information that we've got. And I, it's not all of it. I think staff is going to have a challenging time trying to come back with, the way we've discussed it, with findings that it would appear Luba is going to require out of us to really support our decision. Because again, I think we've always dealt with E4 as being more, even though it may not be the correct term, sort of an aspirational, "This is what we want to happen in our community," where all of a sudden, which we've never done before in my 10-plus years on the Planning Commission, has actually applied it in a site-specific application. And I have a little concern on that issue, that what does that mean in the future? Because now, we've sort of opened up the proverbial can of worms that we've never gone before with, so we're going to now start dealing with E4 probably on a lot more issues than we used to in the past, but that's a topic we'll have to deal with later on. So, at this point, I'm going to support sort of the option one, hoping to see staff can really do a good job at writing a lot of good findings that they believe are going to be Luba-proof, because I'm going to guess that's going to be a challenge.
So, as a starting point, I, I would ask, I mean, if there is an indication of majority support for option one, whether or not, looking back at some of the bullets we've provided in the Agenda Item Summary, if you feel that's a, at least a good start, or is that adequate? Is there something more in terms of direction that the commission might give to staff for those findings? But I understand you're not there yet in terms of a...
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, I guess I want to vote in favor or lean towards option one. I'm, although we're getting hung up on this word aspirational versus policy, the, I think we've got to try to go this way. We've got to, we've got to see what we can come up with, because if we don't, and we go the other way, I think we're, we are going to be faced with E4 being pulled down to many more site-specific situations, and, and if that's the case, then that's the case, but I think we need to try to make the case that what we, the policies and procedures, or PUDs, or CUP procedures, do take that into account. And if they do, then we need to, we need to justify that and write that argument.
Any other final comments? John?
Just an observation, that it's an interesting nature of the beast. If we were trying to determine how to provide cell tower coverage for the city, we would do a study and figure out where it would be most appropriate, the best place to put it, but this is predicated upon, A, a provider looking for another tower, and B, someone willing to put it on their property. So, it creates this challenge of, is it going to be in the ideal place? Well, given the nature of how we get here, no.
And I appreciate that, but you know, even public utilities, EWEB, for example, they're ran a line after the fact too, and cut across properties, so it's not, I don't think it's fair to characterize it just as a private cell operation.
I, I understand that, but if EWEB was going to extend service to an area, and part of that is that this technology has come after we've developed the community. It's, it's just an observation, it's not...
Yeah, no, I know, it's tough.
Any other comments? Bill?
I was just going to make, get it out there, and I move that we conclude that the application is consistent with policy E4.
Is there a second? Jeff seconded it. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Opposed? Passes forward to it. I take it to your answer, Gabe, the bullet points are the...
That's right. We'll, we'll come back with the draft final order for your next meeting. First, we have, we have the second issue to work through here, but, but we'll use this as a starting point. We'll, we'll follow the discussion from today and, and put that together for your review the next meeting. Rick?
Is it, will it be possible for us to see that your draft findings more than just a couple of days in advance of our next hearing? So, we can really...
Probably not much.
We're meeting on March 4th, we also have the EWEB deliberations, and I think, what we're, where are we at? That gives us maybe four days for do something.
Right. We don't have much time.
I would say it's most likely that you'll see...
You make us work hard.
You're most likely to see it Friday.
You are best to get it out there in advance, but it's probably not going to be real early.
Okay.
Yeah.
Tess, two, determining whether it is possible for the applicant to produce a noise study for the underground equipment showing the facility meets the city's noise standards.
Yes, and so, this, in this case, Luba, when they addressed this, they, as I mentioned before, they, they noted that because of the undergrounding, that there was a, the hearings officially concluded that the, it would be pretty obvious that the applicant could meet the noise standards, because they'd be putting it underground, but there was no evidence to show that. And so, Luba said, "Since we're remanding it on something else anyway, the record's going to be open, this will give the applicant a, a chance to produce something to show it is possible to meet the standards." So, that's the, the question here is, can the applicant produce something, or a noise study that will meet city standards in the future? So, and I guess back to Commissioner Baker's talk about, I guess, process-wise, because this has a concurrent PUD application, there is the final PUD application process, which is a type-two process, which does allow notice and public participation, and so, the noise, the actual noise study would be provided at that time, and that would be the actual time when it's concluded whether or not it met the standards at that time, so...
Right now, it's just providing a level of it, of evidence that shows it is possible to produce the study.
Correct.
Mark, we begin the discussion.
Well, based on what you just said, Randy, I, I assume that, that someone can produce a noise study, and I think that's all we're being asked to... It, it does go beyond that, to say it is possible to provide a noise study that will meet city's noise standards, so...
So, to jump in here...
That's kind of a conclusion. That sort of give me the conclusion in the finding, or in the...
If they don't meet it, they can't do it.
I mean, what happens, again, if they produce a study that says, "We can't meet it," then we've said, "Well, you didn't meet the, the remand requirement?" I'm asking, because it sort of says...
That's kind of what it says in Luba's...
Yeah.
It's really, I think it comes down to the question of feasibility. Is it possible to produce a study that would meet those standards? It's not about the merits of the study to the level of dueling experts and looking at, you know, "Does it meet the 45 DVA?" That's not your task, according to Luba's remand, the way that we read it. It's, it's really a question of feasibility in terms of being able to produce such a noise study. Now, we've, we've had argument on both sides and evidence as to whether or not it will meet those standards ultimately, but that's not really the Planning Commission's task here that Luba set out.
I agree. Mine was the way it was phrased, more that, can they produce one that shows that it will? And it's like, "Well, I agree they can produce one, I don't know if I, if I can agree that they can produce one that does show that." I, I don't have the evidence to show that one way or the other. Well, I guess I do, because it is in the evidence now.
Provide it something, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'm okay with that, I guess.
I've got myself in the queue then. Bill, Steve, maybe you can just clarify something for me. The report prepared by SSA for, for AT&amp;T on November 29, 2012, it, it appears to me that their sound study was based on noise coming from what is referenced on their matrix as a power wave technologies condensing cabinet. And the letter from acoustical engineer Art Knoxon on January 18, 2013, in reviewing that SSA report, he notes that, he, on page two of his letter, he, he lists five, he says, "Below is a list of distinct noise sources emanating from AT&amp;T's proposed vault installation." He lists five pieces of equipment, and he says, "Only the first two, the eight, the ground AC condenser and the above-ground hydraulic pump, were evaluated by SSA, the way I read it, and not the other three things, the electronics, the cell tower electronics when they're raised up, or when they're in the vault, or the hydraulic pistons vibrating the elevator platform." Can, can you address that? Were all five of those things measured, or, I mean, are they all part of the condensing cabinet?
I don't know. I would, I would assume that if, that if Mr. Knoxon's analysis is correct, that they, that they did only evaluate two of those.
Yeah.
You would assume that's correct, or...
I would assume that Mr. Knoxon's report is correct.
They didn't provide anything on the rebuttal.
Is this the, this is the final report, allowed to do another study now? And then what...
I was going to say, just so the question again, in front of you, is whether they did or didn't provide analysis of that is, is not necessarily the question again in front of you. Is it feasible that they can provide a study that does that?
Or just the study?
Right. It happens they went further and provided actual technical analysis. That wasn't necessarily a requirement of this remand. I think it was, well, I shouldn't suppose what the, the motivation was, but essentially, it wasn't a requirement that they do the study. The question for you is, is it feasible to do a study that will comply?
I've got Bill, and then Steve, and then Rick.
Well, and I, and I think that's what, what my question or understanding is, that in this portion of it, we're being asked whether or not we believe it's possible for them to provide a noise study that with the underground equipment would meet the city standards, whether or not it's the way they've currently got it designed or not, but if it is currently designed and doesn't meet those standards, then they redesign or make changes where it's still underground so that it does meet those standards, and that that's part of the final PUD approval. Is that a correct assumption?
Right.
Okay, so it's really just whether we think it's, and then if, for some reason, they can't do that underground and meet the noise standards, or, or unwilling to, or whatever, then it doesn't...
Like any other condition, if it can't be met, then the project doesn't move forward.
Right.
Steve?
I was just going to ask, just to make sure that, what, what's concerned to me is, you know, can produce a study that shows it complies? That, that's a little bothersome to me. I was wondering, could we go ahead and require that the study provide information on all five of these categories? on all five of these categories, the three that were missing from the initial draft?
Well, staff has suggested that perhaps we would add a condition of approval that would be applied at the time to require any mitigation needed to ensure compliance.
And, and that, that condition's already essentially implied in the future review of a type-two decision, that they need to meet the noise standard. And so the option would be to condition mitigation or essentially deny it for lack of compliance. And so that's not the fork of the road in front of you here. It's not the task to evaluate it and condition it. And Commissioner Baker, what you're suggesting would require that we reopen the record to address the, the individual components of the study, which I'm not sure really relates to the issue on remand.
Well, and, and you may not want to do that anyway, because it may be that as they reassess compliance with the noise standards, they come up with a different design. That's the, the subsequent process yet to happen still.
Right.
So it may be, there, there's a, a different approach that's taken that doesn't even involve the same technology. I, I mean, I think Gabe's point is, there's code authority right now without, whether you condition or not, to require the compliance with the noise standard. We can go one step further, make it abundantly clear in this decision that they must do so. Doesn't hurt. It's not critical, but it doesn't hurt.
Rick?
Go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, to me, it wasn't that you, sort of like, you would put in the language that you make certain that it includes, you know, all of these possible noise generation sources. Because what bothers me is, since we've all been involved in this, we always have these sort of competing reports sometimes about things and anecdotes and experiences and sort of the energy business. You can produce an energy study that shows you're building great, and then that, you know, after it's built, it consumes three times as much energy as the study shows. So, you know, you just want to make sure that, to me, you make sure that you try to put in enough language that makes certain that the study that we're going to be depending on, you know, is, is inclusive as possible. That's all.
Yeah, we can do that. It's fine.
Yeah, sure.
Rick?
I don't need comment. I'm, I'm okay with what's being asked of us.
Joe?
I, I just want to make sure I'm not confused. As I read task two, as I read this, it seems to me they're asking, they're trying to verify we're not putting an unachievable roadblock in front of it. Is that, if that's what this wording is meant to convey?
Yeah.
In other words, have we put something there that's not achievable in any way?
By requiring...
And, and at the time, you know, based on, you know, their determination, there was just no evidence. It wasn't that there was some, or that there was a struggle over it, in terms of the veracity of that evidence. That, that, I think, was the starting point, was there was none. And so it, it does get to that question.
It seems to be more of a loaded question than, is it possible to produce a study? Because I've, I've heard that term. Is it possible to produce a study that will allow this to be built?
Yeah, I mean, I think if you read Luba's decision, I think what, what they're basically saying is, look, it may seem obvious that by undergrounding, it's going to deal with the noise problem. But we don't have anything in front of us to verify that for a fact. We already remanded this item back. Here's a chance to tie up and tighten up that part of the record. So basically, you know, deal with that issue at this stage. Don't evaluate the noise study at this stage. We're not saying that that was inappropriate to defer to, to the, the later stage, but does that help?
I'm troubled by this. I don't see how you can answer this, then, if that's the case. I mean, how can we tell them, yes, it's possible to do a study? And yes, it's possible, we believe it's possible that it'll satisfy the criteria, but we can't know that, can we?
There's information in the record now from the applicant to address that. And I think that's what you look toward. It's not, you're not having to do this by yourself. There's, there's information that's been provided by the applicant to address that. Now, there's competing information from, from another acoustical engineer as well. That's where you would go. Based on that evidence that's been provided to you, do you now feel you have enough to be able to make a decision on that?
Bill?
And I don't think it's whether or not the, the noise stand, because the noise standard is part of the code. And so meeting that noise level is in the code. That's a requirement. Undergrounding, if I recall, was part of the code, too. They wanted a variance to go above ground, which we denied.
Part of your decision, too, right.
And that was part of our decision. So our decision was to keep it underground. They still have to meet the noise standard. And I have to believe that if that noise standard was originally set up in the code, that there should be at least a reasonable chance for them to be able to meet that standard, or they wouldn't be able to build it. And so I think by us saying that we believe it's possible, we're not necessarily saying you can't build it because we don't think you can really meet it. I think it's, there's a reasonable chance that it's possible, whether or not it involves a huge amount of acoustic isolation or whatever, you know, that's, I think, for them to decide. But I think, I think it's possible. And whether it's feasible for them, or whether they want to do that, that's another issue that really isn't our decision.
In essence, you already said that in your appeal, by doing the undergrounding, as the means, in essence, that will ensure compliance. And Luba said, based on what? So your, your decision that it's feasible to meet the standard, in essence, was already addressed during the appeal. And Luba's saying, give us more evidence that there's a study possible that will get you there.
Rick?
I'm good.
John?
And everything, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think this is just here because they said, since they're sending it back to you anyway, why don't you comment on this?
Any other final comments now?
Sir, I move that we determine that it is possible for the applicant to produce a noise study for the underground equipment, showing the facility will meet the city's noise standard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded it and we put our discussion. All is due to the motion, raise your hand. Toes, raise your hand. Very succinct. Staff, anything else you need from us?
No, I think, I think we have enough to get you something soon. Thank you.
Okay, then the item three, items from the commission and staff.
Just see you tomorrow, basically. And if you have any questions about the information that Terry sent out, I'm happy to entertain those.
Haven't got there, haven't got there yet.
Bill, you want to pitch in on tomorrow?
Just wanted to...
Since Bill's the subcommittee chair, he's going to facilitate tomorrow's.
I'll be your emcee tomorrow. Yeah, 8:30, the Chinook Room at Woolworth's, next door. And we will have you done by, us done by four. Light breakfast will be provided, some bagels, I think Rhonda was saying, some bagels and coffee and stuff. And then I have the lunch order. I think everybody's done their lunch order except Commissioner Jaworski. And I'll need to get that to him. So I think, I think that's pretty much it. You got your, everybody get their agendas for tomorrow? Have you mailed that?
I haven't got to Terry's, whatever I'm supposed to learn by tomorrow, but that'll happen tonight.
Analyze yourself tonight, Rick.
Yeah. I don't have time for that. We're in a short a time period. It's going to take a lot longer. Isn't that what we're supposed to do tomorrow, is analyze each other?
Just one more quick thing. This isn't retreat related, but...
John has...
John had a retreat. I just wanted to ask the two of you if you'd be with me just a second to go over my part tomorrow.
Sure.
Sure. Reminder about that scenario planning workshop on Thursday. You should have all gotten that email invitation.
Did it just come out that? It's kind of hard to plan five or six working days ahead of time.
We share that concern.
It's also hard to miss a half-day...
And it's, and isn't it about planning ahead?
Full day, too.
Sort of?
Ironic, isn't it?
You what?
Ironic.
Yeah. Plan ahead. You've got five days to decide if you're going to make it or not.
The softball element workshop this week, too.
Yeah.
Tomorrow, tomorrow's the night.
Anything else from the commission, staff? Tomorrow is retreat, then we get to go there next Monday for all of AT&amp;T.
Right. Meeting's adjourned. Steve?